Call to order, the Angels Camp City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 3rd. If you could, please stand for the press.
I am Susan Clark of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call.
Mayor Paul Lindor?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Herman?
Here.
Councilmember Olivera?
Present.
Councilmember Beehill?
Here.
Councilmember Matildee?
On the agenda, it says report out of closed session. We did not have a closed session, so there was no report. Approval of the agenda. Please make note that 6B is a public hearing.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
By Councilmember Beal, second by Vice Mayor.
Me.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, somebody coming in. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on matters not on the agenda. The law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda. Is there any public comment? Item number five, consent. We have one item on the consent agenda is the motion to approve the meetings of March 20th, 2018.
So I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First item is item A, authorization to award the raspberry stair replacement project to Tri-County Construction. Mr. Myers.
Thank you. Thank you. So this council item is the consideration of authorizing the award of the raspberry stair replacement project. The project was advertised with two options for the bidders, to bid on the wood stair or the steel stair. This was done with intent to allow the council to make choice of alternate that they wanted. After the bids were received, every, it should be noted that every builder bid on both alternates, and those bids are listed in the report. I made the recommendation to go with Tri-County and the wood stairs. However, there are a few things to consider. The steel alternate will last about two or three times longer than the wood alternate, but the wood stairs can be easily repaired by our city crews. The steel alternate is a more permanent fix, but if there's any changes to the buildings down there, that may hamper any future changes. And right now, the price for the wood alternate is affordable for the city. The steel alternate is a little bit more expensive. So basically, as I said earlier, my recommendation is for Tri-County construction. They have provided the necessary bonds and insurances, and a check with their license in history shows that they are satisfactory as a contractor. So basically, that's it. Is there any questions?
Any questions by the councils?
Right here.
No. No. Is there any public comment? If there's no further comment, is there a motion to move forward with staff's recommendation?
I'll move that we move forward with the wood alternate for $48,600 with Tri-County Construction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For one.
Nice job, Dave.
You start tomorrow, right?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Item 6B, this is the first reading and introduction, this is the public hearing for ordnance number 481. And I'm going to turn it over to Amy to go from there.
Mayor, council members, this has sort of been a long time coming. It's to rezone 30 parcels to be consistent with the general plan that was adopted in 2009. So it does take a while to implement our general plans. Business attraction and expansion was identified in several economic studies that were done in the late 90s as a method for generating jobs, educational facilities, and to have something that maybe wasn't heavy manufacturing that would be appropriate next to residential type uses in a compact city, but that could still be revenue-producing and generate jobs. And that's why that was invented, if you will. The Planning Commission has recommended approval on March 8th to you for all 30 parcels. You will probably recall some previous hearings you had in which four parcels were removed. You can see where it looks like there's a, that arrow-looking parcel up above those. There were four parcels that were removed several years ago, and so those remain outside of this. Some of the parcels that are included in here, in fact, have a current development application pending, so it is very important that we go ahead and address those parcels where there are active applications pending. There isn't that much more to it other than, a lot of people receive notices. They receive those notices because they are within 300 feet of the parcel. And obviously, if you open up something and it says rezoning to BAE, in this case, if you did not have a map in your notice that had a big old yellow highlight, your parcel is not being rezoned. You simply adjoin a parcel that is being rezoned or are within 300 feet of one of those parcels that is being rezoned. And with that, if there are any questions from the council?
Amy, can you share with us the general difference between BAE and SC?
What it generally does is it takes a lot of projects that currently require a conditional use permit, which is not a guarantee of development. It has discretion, and it makes them a site plan review instead or a straight-out permitted use. So it actually, in addition to expanding the types of uses, it streamlines, if you will, and makes more predictable your ability to actually develop the parcel.
Okay, so as a landowner, I'd be happy with the increased flexibility, I would think.
Correct. And it does not increase your parcel taxes. If you go and develop it and add additional buildings, yes, it will, but at present, the rezoning itself does not affect your parcels. And we re-verified that with the assessor just to make sure they hadn't changed their policy, and they have not.
Thank you.
Any other council comment before I open it to?
Just some of the subtleties. The difference between RA and R3 is what?
Residential ag is RA. We have very little of it in the county because our, excuse me, the city, because our ag history has sort of moved away. R3, basically, that's for really heavy apartment-type uses, whereas RA would be a 5, 10-acre parcel where maybe you'd still have a couple cattle.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other comments? I'm going to open it to public here. Okay. So this portion is for the public hearing, for the comments. If you could, please limit it to the three minutes. Each person coming up to the podium, and make sure you speak in the mic. Yep. Go. Is there any public? No? Okay.
Bob Middleton, 557 Live Oak Drive. On the suburban commercial to the business attraction development, the one thing I noticed a difference is, is it allows light industrial, which is, to my opinion, light industrial should never be on Main Street. It should be off Main Street. That zone was suburban commercial before, so I'm not quite understanding, because when I was on the Planning Commission, we did the 2020 general plan. That's why it was suburban commercial, was for business development and retail, not so much business development and industrial. We shouldn't have a UPS distribution center on Main Street. That would be light industrial. That should be off Main Street. That would be my, that's my only concern. The industrial zone where we have out by PG&E, that was on the 2020 general plan. But the other, the business attraction and development part, that includes some light industrial, and I'm not too sure that's what we want on Main Street, is light industrial stuff.
So I don't know who can answer that question or not, yeah?
I'm going to, yeah, any, please, sorry. Bob. They're trying to, yeah.
There is a bit of a line between suburban commercial, which in planner talk is heavy commercial, and light industrial. Light industrial is not like California electric, for example. It is supposed to be a more landscaped campus-type thing where you do like electronics, for example, and stuff like that. And sometimes they look for, I hate using the word "industrial" at all with BAE, because BAE does not allow you to do that.
But it does say that.
It does say that, light industrial, and that is misleading. It, however, is not your typical industrial. It is more of the campus-type setting, and that is in here, and it is in the general plan, that it's the more landscaped look that would generate. You should not have extensive noise with it. You won't have extensive, well, extensive noise is one of the main things.
Oh, yeah, I don't know if you're concerned. Budweiser distributor.
Yeah. No.
Or, you know, that. Granted, we have Ora Wheat or whatever. If you could, sir, just because, for the recording, if you wouldn't mind, just go into the mic.
Thank you.
That's my concern, is we don't need a UPS distribution center with trucks going in Budweiser, Pepsi-Cola, whatever. That is, granted, we have, you know, UPS now at Frogtown, which is a great location for it. PG&E, well, PG&E is a great location for it. We do have the Ora Wheat or whatever that is out by Copella Park, where they do their distribution out, when they make the deliveries out of that. But along Main Street proper, we're going to have a lot of other traffic that doesn't need to be there. So that's my concern, is noise. Noise and heavy traffic from trucks. You know, if it's a campus setting, kind of like, I guess, for us, for our area, it'd be GetSmart Group. You know, it's a tech company, doesn't generate a lot of road traffic, good business on Main Street, but a distribution center of any sort would not be something that would be welcomed, in my opinion, in my interpretation of how it reads.
And in the table that was recently, well, not recently, but it was adopted, section 1734, basically, the difference between commercial, suburban commercial and BAE with respect to distribution centers, there is no change. They're always a conditional use because of the concerns you expressed. So they're in those districts regardless of what you call it. Those type of heavy uses are remaining conditional uses.
Any other public comment?
I have one more question. Amy, these changes you're making here, I'm sorry, go ahead. Changes you're making here, these are consistent with the existing general plan?
Yes.
Okay, we're just, we're doing this nine years late?
Correct.
Got it.
We, part of the reason being, we had to create a new zoning district. It didn't exist before. That was one of our excuses, at least.
Mike Fullaway, 155 South Main and 494 North Main. Just a quick question I have, kind of follow-up with Bob. I think we got clarity, and I'll be more than happy to meet with Amy. I went on vacation, I came back, you guys did a lot of things while I was gone. Very proud of you. Is this possible? Because if I understand, what I just heard was, this will make it streamlined, so, no, it won't be conditional use, so that you can go through planning, you don't necessarily have to go through the process of going to the board for anything that might not be under conditional use?
Not quite.
Clarify for me.
Okay. Basically, when you have a conditional use, which is what a lot of these uses currently are, it means you may or you may not get the project you've proposed. It means you have to jump through a lot more thresholds, and the Planning Commission or the city council can say, no, you can't do it, because it's conditional. We're changing that to a site plan review. Many times, those still have to go to the Planning Commission, but you get to do it by write. You do get to do the project. It's not up to discretion, but we still do review it, and it's usually, not always, still goes to the Planning Commission, but nice try.
So can I get my property changed to BAE?
You can do two general plan amendments per year. You may certainly apply.
Oh, you're so nice.
The next question is more of a comment towards the board, is that although I think business attraction's an extremely important thing, I hope that you do the things that we have done in the past. I'm a little concerned when I see Sonora Regional with their access to the highway there at the clinic. I've looked at the new approved Dollar General access to the highway. I hope we don't develop as Sonora did to where traffic really becomes an issue. And I guess my follow-up question to this would be back to Amy, is that since she has an application before this zoning was changing, will this affect that application? Or are they under the old suburban commercial? Or through the middle of this application, you're going to change it?
If the city had not initiated the rezone, they would have had to have come in and done a rezone in addition to all the other entitlements they have to get. The fact that we're doing this means that's one of the steps they no longer have to go through if this is passed. If not, then they have to come through for a reason.
So not to confuse the issue, but I would say that I need to spend a little time with her to come up to speed. Obviously, I can't speak to Dave, but I have a lot of questions that I cannot get answered by you, but I think Amy can sit down with me, and I look forward to that. My concern is, is that we have traffic coming into this town at 45 to 55 miles an hour. I hope we don't create traffic problems in this town. I know we have growth, we need growth, but I hope we do it correctly. So I look forward to sitting down with you and getting a lot more questions, because, like I say, I took a vacation, I came back. Goodness gracious, good for you guys. Thank you.
Are there any other public comment? No? Okay, at this point, I will close the public hearing. So back to council, is there any other questions, comments? Just for clarity for everyone, can we make note of the explanation that you explained to Mr. Middleton, and so it's more transparent? If somebody were to look at that, is there a way to do that?
So we could have her submit a letter to the, to the files, so that it would be reflected?
Okay.
No?
Okay.
So that would be part, become part of the minutes?
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Then at this point, is there a, we'll go ahead and move, make a motion to approve this then, Doug? Yeah, okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Well, we're setting the date.
We're just setting it.
So should we set the date for, is it next meeting, or is it 30 days?
I thought this was.
It'd be next meeting.
Okay.
All right. Do you need a motion for that, or is that?
We got to approve the first reading and the introduction, or, I'm sorry, your wave first reading and the introduction of ordinance 481, and then we'll be having second reading and approving it at the next meeting.
I'll move, I'll move what he just said.
Okay. Is there a second? Again, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Beal and seconded by Councilmember Olivera.
And I just wanted to clarify that the 17th is the second reading.
Yes.
Just in case.
And then, for the record, so nobody gets confused, assuming it's approved at the next meeting, it doesn't take effect for 30 days after that.
Okay.
I thought my motion was pretty clear.
I didn't say that you were confused, I'm just saying for the public, I just want everybody to be on the same page. Your motion was excellent. If I do say so myself.
Moving on, item C, discussion in possible direction to pursue ballot measure for local tax measure.
All right.
Here we go.
So I'm excited to bring this item before the council for consideration and discussion, but staff recommends that you consider the development of a locally-dedicated tax measure on the November 6th, 2018 ballot, and direct staff to develop and introduce the corresponding measure. I've identified several areas that require your consideration. Those include the pursuit of a local revenue measure, including a transit occupancy tax increase or sales tax increase, the determination of a special tax or general tax, a determination of a rate, whether it be a 2% TOT, a 7.34% sales tax or 8% sales tax, discussion of GAN limits, and authorizing the maximum, to maximize the GAN limit accordingly, and include that in ballot language if necessary, and determine whether or not if a special tax, a citizens oversight committee, should be part of the ballot language, and ultimately direct us to bring back according to the identified schedule provided for you in the staff report. And I'd also like to request, if the city council does move forward with a local tax measure, the appointment of two council members as a subcommittee to oversee this initiative process, moving forward with initiatives such as this would be a first time for me as city administrator, so I would appreciate the guidance of council and your support. So as we've discussed over the last several meetings, the city for the past three years has approved general fund budget deficits totaling $681,000 between 2014, 15, and 16, 17. Those actual general fund deficits have been much lower, and specifically, they've been much lower over the past two years when compared to the budget because of several cost-cutting measures that the city has implemented over the last few years, specifically hiring freezes within our public works department, within our fire department, and the elimination of a position within our administrative and finance department. The city, we remain challenged to identify long-term strategy to address planning and growth needs, aging infrastructure, delayed internal service needs, and postponed capital improvements, including many parks and community projects that the community has gotten behind and supported over the years with some community planning projects, specifically through the Calaveras Council of Governments. We've also been challenged with our unfunded pension liability, which totals $4.6 million, and the need to identify a strategy to address that in the long term. We will be challenged immediately over the next one to three years with rising pension costs estimated by our auditor to be anywhere between 30 and 40% over the next three years. And in recent discussions, there's anticipation of a potential for a recession. And based on how the city's responded to the last several recessions, it's been recommended that we increase reserve amounts by about $678,000 to maintain our current levels of service, should we realize a decrease in sales tax of about $135,000 over a five-year period of time. So obviously, that's a conservative estimate. So the fiscal constraints are starting to take a toll within the community. I receive concerns from residents, most often, about the condition of streets, the conditions of sidewalks, the condition of, you know, our downtown community area, specifically Raspberry parking lot, the Raspberry stairs, which I know is no surprise, and then concerns about our parks and the dilapidation of our parks and what our plans are to improve So the city council, as a way of addressing these issues, has directed staff to issue an RFP and dedicated $65,000 of our general fund reserve to an organizational analysis and a budget stabilization study to determine what best practices are, identify some fiscal policies moving forward, and a plan to stabilize and sustain the city's budget long term. The city council also directed staff to look at some revenue alternatives. Specifically, in our previous discussions, they centered around transit occupancy tax. In my research of TOT, I've also included the potential for sales tax in this discussion as well. So I've provided an analysis of a TOT increase, where we sit as a city in terms of our rate being average with most communities like ours throughout the state. 2% increase to our TOT would generate approximately $200,000 in added revenue for the city. So if we look at our structural deficit approved in our budget, historically, over the last several years, it's ranged between 103, this year to $200,000 in the previous two years. That's as budgeted. We've come in under. And so we typically come in under, not because of structural fixes or remedies within the budget, but because of things like vacancies within salaries and positions. For example, we may have a vacancy within the police department, and a physician goes unfilled for a year. So that provides us with an opportunity to sort of survive another year without having to tap into that general fund reserve. So as I mentioned, most rates are about 10%. The county is at 6. Calaveras County is at 6% right now. We talked a little bit about the county and their plans moving forward, and it's my understanding that they're looking at hiring a consultant to explore the potential of a TOT increase. It's not my understanding that this will be completed by the November ballot deadlines. So then we move into a discussion of sales tax. And unlike TOT, where we are about average with our counterparts throughout the state, the city of Angels' sales tax rate is low comparatively speaking. We're at 7.25%, and of the 482 incorporated cities, about 9% have a tax rate of 7.25% statewide, average being 8.4. Our neighbors to the north and south have passed ballot measures in 2004, and I believe 2005, increasing their percent by 0.5%. Sonora increased theirs for police, fire, and public works projects, and the city of Jackson approved their increase in 2005 to fund full-time fire department personnel. So we also took a look at other cities surrounding our communities. When we asked people, where do you shop most often, and they would say, I go to Crossco and Manteca, Modesto, Stockton. We looked at their tax rate comparatively, and they're all above 7.5%, with Stockton being 9, and Manteca 8.25, and Modesto 7.875. So the city receives an average of about $800,000 a year, and if we were to consider an increase to 7.34%, that would equate to potentially $400,000 a year in added revenue. It's estimated that this initially is below the GAN limit that the 2016, 17 budget identified as being about $404,000. But we've talked with our auditor, we've talked with Leo Council, and there's a potential, should the city have any concerns about reaching that GAN limit, about modifying that within the ballot measure, should you so choose. We took a look at if the city would like to consider an 8% increase, and again, addressing the GAN limit, it may yield an additional $600,000 in added revenue. Should the city decide to identify a purpose for that revenue, for example, a split between fire, police, and community projects, that would equate to about $200,000 for each of those service functions under the 8% scenario. If the city were looking at the 7.34%, then that drops down to about $133,000 a year. We've identified the difference between the special tax and the general tax. One of the things, when we talk to community members about increasing TOT or increasing the sales tax, they want to know that it's going to something, is what we heard. They want to know that it's going to either preserve a service or enhance a service. So that was a little bit of the feedback that we had. We can do a general tax, and we can also draft a ballot measure for the purposes of a general tax that includes an advisory measure expressing the public's desire for the use of those funds. The difference being, a general tax would require 50% plus one vote. A special tax, a supermajority or 66.6% of voter approval would be needed to support and pass a special tax in the city. We also have been made aware of the Tax Fairness, Transparency, and Accountability Act of 2018, which has not acquired the needed signatures to make the ballot as of now. But should that make the November 2018 ballot, it would eliminate the distinction between a general and a special tax requiring a supermajority. It's also intended that, should that pass, it would be retroactive and include any tax measures that were approved or supported in November 2018. measures that were approved or supported in November 2018. So if the council were to choose moving forward with a general tax but specifying the public's desire for use of those, should we get the 50 plus one approval, we would want to continue throughout the process to work with our legal counsel to evaluate where we are and where that proposed proposition is, so that we could let you know if we need to make any changes in our ballot measure, changing it either to a special tax or recognizing that we'll need 2/3 majority vote in order to get it supported, whether it be a general tax, or can we possibly hold a special election so that we could beat the November 2000 election. So basically, I've identified the next steps and the items for your consideration. We've also identified a preliminary schedule of deadlines. We'll be working with the county to make sure that we are compliant with their expectations and meeting their deadlines as well. I've also identified a potential cost estimate. I'm estimating $10,000 to $20,000. This is based on prior budget initiatives and potentially some added legal counsel time for participation in the development of this initiative and staff time, and this amount is not currently identified in the existing budget. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions that you have, but we'll turn it over to the council.
I have one question.
Sure.
If we were to have to make the changes due to...
Thank you, I'll speak up, ma'am. I can really hear you.
If we were to have to make ballot changes due to this initiative that's going to be on the November, isn't there a deadline to put stuff on there? So how would we be able to backtrack any language after the submission date if that did get the signatures needed?
So the timeframe in which they have to gather the signatures is much earlier than the timeframe in which we would have to, that we have in order to put something on the ballot, or in the alternative call a special election.
Okay. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
I had a question about the Tax Fairness, Transparency, and Accountability Act. My understanding then is that this is something that has been sort of the Proposition 13, and I wondered if you know, Doug, how, you know, how the response to the public is towards this? How does it look as far as it's moving along?
So the last report we had, which is about a month and a half, two months ago, was they had collected 25 percent of the needed signatures, which at this point in time would be fairly far behind where they need to be. It's not clear whether, we do know that they have paid signature gatherers, and so they can make up ground fairly quickly if they were to do that. It's something that we're monitoring very closely because one of the things that we'll be bringing to you, in addition to all this, is even if the city doesn't want to have marijuana of any kind in the city, we want to have a marijuana tax in place in the event that the state takes away the city's ability to prohibit it or not allow it within the jurisdiction. So we want to have a local tax measure, so at least we'd be able to get local taxes off it in that event. So every city, irrespective of whether or not they want marijuana, is looking at this in particular, right? But it has much, much wider implications, and I do think that if it were to qualify, we would have to look very strongly at the possibility of calling a special election, even if that were more expensive to do to avoid some of the negative implications. And I think you'd see cities across the state doing something similar, because there's going to be a lot of ballot measures on the upcoming November ballot.
And the purpose for this, is there, because there are certain weaknesses in the tax laws right now that they're seeing, they're trying to kind of plug up some holes, or...
I think they're trying to make it harder to raise taxes.
Yes, I mean...
So it's an idea that you can only do it if you have, you can basically only raise taxes in the event that there's a supermajority.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. Because I'd heard, we were talking, I think, today about some fees and little things that were coming in, that were not called a tax but are a tax, and that this group is looking at that, I was just...
Yep.
So do we want to open it to a public comment and then bring it back to council to discuss the three options in front of us? Okay. Okay, so at this moment, open to public comment on this? No public comment? Oh, okay.
Good evening, Vicki Ranky, Angels Camp. I have a question, because you mentioned something about a marijuana tax. So can you explain more about what that is that you're talking about? Thank you.
So it's, to be clear, it's not part of this agenda item. I use it as an illustration of something that we would want to do in November irrespective of whether or not you want to allow marijuana or not. In other words, in the event that the state takes away local control over marijuana, meaning whether or not you can allow it or not allow it. Right now, locals have that control. In the event they take that away, which there's been some conversations about taking that away, that there would be at least a tax in place that would allow the city to be able to recover or offset some of the impacts of that being done. That would be in preparation for a state activity, not a local activity.
So what you're saying is that part of that tax that we would put on a ballot, we would include that in the tax language?
Not in the one that's being proposed today. It would be a separate ballot item. So you might have three or four ballot items on different...
Well, then for this, for this council to do it in time for January's meeting, it needs to be discussed right away, right?
It's not like an ordinance where it has multiple meetings. We can adopt it at one meeting, and it doesn't, if you look at the schedule, we're looking at, I think it has to be submitted by May 1st, so we essentially have all of this month in order to...
I hope the public gets notice on it, because that's a big concern.
Right.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, that's just to keep the local control? Not to say, just to keep a local revenue on anything?
Correct. It wouldn't allow it. It would only create a tax mechanism in the event that the city decided in the future to allow it, or that the state required us to allow it.
Okay.
Right, and that was illustrative.
It was an example.
Comment, and we don't need to discuss that tonight.
Yeah, and that was just an example of explaining the Tax Fairness, Transparency, Accountability Act of 2018. That's just an example that he was using to explain how we can keep any special tax that we want to implement. No, I just, it was just an example he was showing to explain the domino effect if that other ballot were to pass in the state.
I'll ask my question to you about that.
Okay. Does that make, does that clarify that that was just an example to use? Okay, awesome. Okay, if there's no other public comment related to the TOT and the sales tax that is in front of us...
Bob Middleton again, 374 North Main, F-557, I vote, I guess. My question on sales tax, because being as high, I am, you know, other than Mike, but I'm probably the only big, you know, the big-ticket item business in the city. I lose sales regularly to the internet on appliance packages because they buy it from US Appliance, ABT, and I can match the internet price, but I can't match the internet price when they don't have to charge sales tax. When I'm another 7 and 1/2 percent higher because I have to collect sales tax, I'm losing the sales. And that's my concern, and I know it's a state, you know, the thing is, we're supposed to put it on our income tax form that we bought X number of dollars from, you know, tax-free stuff, not tax-free, but no sales tax and pay a use tax on it, but 99 percent of America doesn't do that. That's my concern on the sales tax. The TOT tax, to me, from my perspective, is a seamless tax. So if you raise TOT, no one's going to really notice it, because when I go to San Francisco, I don't ask what the tax rate is, I ask what the room rate is. You know, their sales, their TOT tax is 15 percent. So whenever you travel, I've never ever asked what the TOT, T taxes in any community or any place I've ever visited, I always ask what the hotel rate is. Again, on the TOT tax, I know we've been doing better, but we have to get really diligent on the Airbnbs and the VBRAs to make sure that they're listed for collection of the TOT tax, because that's another big jump. But, you know, there's a lot of Airbnbs, if you ever go to the Airbnb website, there's a ton of Airbnbs in Angels Camp, and I don't know, they're all listed on rules for TOT tax. And I don't know how many of them are listed on the VBRO sites, and there's other sites out there that do that besides those two. But that's my only concern, is the sales tax, if we can get the state to get on board, to get these people to start paying tax on all the stuff they buy when you don't have a brick and mortar inside the state and not to collect sales tax, it would make my life a hell of a lot easier, I'll put it that way.
Thank you. Did any other comment on the TOT and the sales tax? No? Okay, at that point, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. So there's three items in front of us, the 2 percent for the TOT, the 7.75, or the 8 percent for the sales tax. At this point, what does the council feel?
I just have a couple of comments. The TOT, the only, it is kind of, if you look at, I can see where you look at as a seamless tax, where the only place I think it might bite us is if the county stays at 6, we go to 12, and a hotel wants to build, and they build right outside the city limits because that's a pretty big difference. So that would be a major loss of TOT if that were to happen. That'd be my only concern on that. And then, sales taxes, you know, to me, it's something that regardless of personal preference, I think it's something that the voters deserve to have a crack at. So instead of us making a decision whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, I think putting it to the voters is a smart thing to do. I would tend to go the 7 and 3/4, or even 7 and 1/2. I am concerned about the GAN limit, how that's calculated. I don't want to get in a situation where we're overtaxing our citizens. The GAN limit is in place as a way to regulate how much the cities tax their citizens so they don't run away with unnecessary, I suppose, expenses. So it's there to limit the city's ability to collect taxes based on the city's size, based on inflation, what have you, and I don't want to get in a situation where we have to potentially refund money or violate state law. So I would tend to go on the lower side.
I would have to conclude with whatever the option is to protect it from going over the GAN limit, what the best, you know, whatever option keeps us from going over that, that we can move forward with.
Well, I was thinking also, I think the 7 and 3/4, and I think that if we needed to increase the GAN limit, I just think that 7 and 1/2, looking at our future and our struggles, is just a half, you know, a half cent or half percent is not enough. I think that we need a 50, you know, a 5 percent, 0.5 percent. Oh, sorry. Okay, so I was saying that I believe that I'm in favor of the 7 and 3/4, okay? Because I think that our, our future is uncertain. We have been struggling, and we have even low morale in some of the departments because we cannot fill the positions and have enough people working to be able to do all of the things that need to be done. And that I would not favor so much a TOT because of the problem, we have to kind of wait and see what the county, that's my thought, is, you know, waiting until we see what the county does. I'm not that much in favor of the TOT at this time. Later, if the county were to go, and we might want to reconsider that if they were to go up to 12 percent. So that's my thought on those two things.
Is there a way to make the, go for a rate that would not exceed the GAN limit? For example, if we're within 400,000 in the GAN limit, and we're going to put TOT and sales tax on the ballot, if both those pass at the 7 and 3/4 and 2 percent level, that's a $600,000 increase, and that bumps us up over the GAN already. So do we want to tie our hopes, or tie the ballot to the 400,000 figure, or do we want to get more clarification on the GAN limit and what we could possibly do?
I think if your goal, if the council's goal is to kind of get up as close as we can to the GAN limit, then we can come back, staff can come back with you with a proposal that shows where we think we can safely go without exceeding it.
And that can be done in time for a ballot measure.
Yes.
We could also, in the measure, identify language to maximize the GAN limit and adjust the appropriation limit according to the tax limit that you identify, or the percentage. So if you identify 7 and 3/4, then we can maximize the limit according to that amount. I think the concern that I have is, right now, the GAN limit's been increasing, but there's a potential that it could always decrease at some point in time. So...
I think, I think right now, I think that's highly unlikely, though. We're, the two, from what, the way I understand it, there are a couple of formulas you can use, but the two major contributors to the formula are population and inflation. And I don't see our population shrinking much, although it may not grow very much, I don't think we see it shrinking much. And also, we tend to be more in inflationary times right now with rates rising the way the markets are. I think there's, it's more likely inflation will increase significantly as opposed to decreasing significantly. So I would not be as concerned about it going down. I would just be more concerned about it not going up very fast and us paying the limit and then being forced to try to average it back. That'd be really tough to do, I think.
So do we, does the council want to see two tax? I guess the question is to clarify for staff, do you want to see two taxes on the ballot, or do you want just one or the other? If it meets two...
I'd like to see two, and I'd like to see the caution with respect to the GAN, but I'm concerned about the GAN because it's kind of vague to me. Is it a self-calculated number based on our internal finances, or is it a number that comes back to us based on our reporting? Why the disconnect and what the number really is? And so, you know, I'd be comfortable with two things going forward bumping right up against it, but not going over.
Yeah.
You know, and I say that with an understanding that it's, even if we hit it, there's a two-year correction period after that where we can bring it back into, you know, back under the number without penalty, correct?
Correct.
So up to it and bump it, but not get upside down by a couple hundred thousand. It's kind of the rate I'd be looking for.
And then you're curious to basically refund the money to the public, so if you did go over it...
How is that done?
Not a whole lot.
I mean, how do you refund money to the public based on tax? I mean, you don't write checks to each citizen, you, there must be reduced taxes, I don't know.
What I think we should do is when we come back, we'll bring up, I think what I'm hearing from you all is to bring back something that maximizes what we can do with the GAN limit in place, and then probably give you a little bit of a presentation on the GAN limit and how the calculation is and stuff like that.
I'd like some degree of comfort about what that number really is, yeah.
I would, it's okay. You want to go? Why don't you go ahead? My preference is not having both taxes. I'm fearful of the response of the public, even though the TOT, if it's not understood, I'm afraid they would feel that they're being overtaxed. And a couple of people have even said something about the sales tax and 7 and 3/4, oh, okay. I said eight, and they went, "What? Eight?". You know, it was like, you know, have that reaction, why everything's, you know, $4.99 on TV and not $5, or, you know. There's that perception. So I would fear perception is all with trying to do both, and that we may not get neither of them, I'm afraid. You know, that's, that's my fear.
I think we could present that correctly to show that it's two streams and what the effects are on people, that we can, we can make the case for both at the same time.
Might I have this for you again?
What did I say? I think, what I said was, I think we can make the case for both streams and the effect that they have on, you know, the population in the city versus the transit population, and be pretty secure that people can understand that and be comfortable with it. So I'm still in favor of the two taxes simultaneously to try and get ahead of the game here a little bit.
Now, do, I know in the past we've talked to, we've mentioned ACT and DAC, but also making sure that the hotels, you know, are involved with any feedback. We need to know, just like it was mentioned today, those domino effects, if there should be any, too. I'd like to see, because I really don't want to be hitting the ground running, and then that support's still not there.
Yeah, no, and we did host, DAC did host a meeting, and we did invite all of the hotel owners to participate. Many of the big motels did not attend the meeting, but what we did here is that, you know, it's concerning for them. They feel like they are pretty competitive in having to compete for those rates. But there's, there's kind of an understanding that the city needs to be an attractive, you know, vibrant community, but we didn't get the participation really to get a feel for what that population feels about this increase. But we did, we did host a meeting with DAC.
That is concerning, but the fact that it wasn't... That is concerning, but the fact that it wasn't well-attended, the fact that there's nobody here tonight speaking against it from the hotels, it makes me think that, at the very least, putting out to the public for their vote and letting the campaign run its course is probably a fair thing to do. I do understand 12% is very high compared to our, the neighbors around us. But if our occupancy levels are as high as I think they might be, then it might be okay. I don't know, I mean, hotel people should be here telling us and helping us out.
So, we're thinking of what you're saying, two different ballot measures, not putting them together, but two?
Yes.
So, that people could vote one, the other.
Right. And I think we have to go general as opposed to specific just because of the majority of 50% versus two-thirds.
And then, also clarifying what, do the public understand where that money is going to?
Well, that would be, we'd have to keep it general. We can say, you know, police, fire, public works, et cetera, and keep it general so it's not earmarked. If we earmark it, we need a supermajority. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
That's true. You can put kind of intent language that we kind of intend to use it generally this way, but without the earmarked obligation. And you could still then meet the general, or the 50 plus one threshold.
I mean, our general fund is police, fire, public works. That's one of the monies.
But clarifying to the public, because I don't think a lot of people understand that either.
The council will, if the council was to put this ballot measure on the agenda, it would be, you would be appointing somebody amongst you or a subcommittee of you to write an argument in favor of the measure to the public that would be on the ballot. So, that will, you will get the opportunity to help clarify that. There'll also be a city attorney analysis of the provision, and then somebody would be able to put in an argument against it if they wanted.
Any other council comment? Does staff have what they need?
Okay, so, my understanding is there's consensus or direction from the group to move forward with both TOT and sales tax, leaning towards a general tax, determination of rate, 2% TOT, and seven and three-quarter sales with a discussion and presentation of the GAN limit, and then how it can be accommodated or adjusted within those two measures. And then, I guess, we need a subcommittee.
What would a citizens oversight committee do?
So, if a special tax, we, you could appoint a citizens oversight committee to monitor, to develop the spending plan.
We're not doing a special tax, though, so we're going to skip that.
And I'm not aware of, for general tax, that there's typically a citizens oversight committee. I've only seen of a special.
It's just if the council wants to do it so that they could oversee the fund. It's not, it's not necessary. It's just, and if you go general, you may not want to do it. If you felt like it helped the public support it in terms of voting for it, you might consider it, but there's no requirement that you do it.
Yeah. I think it might be something, again, I'm thinking about the public and winning the public over, might be something we should consider because I don't think it could do any harm, and it could just have more of an appearance of trying to include the public and getting people who are really positive towards it in the public, is my thought.
Yeah, and I think the only, the harm it could do is, you would have volunteers from the public, citizens basically maybe hamstringing the experts, the city administrator, the staff, as far as how to best use those funds.
Well, was that, let me, just to ask, Scott, I wanted to ask, is, is that committee going to be doing the wording for the, or are they making decisions?
No, they would, if it were a special tax, and you identified specific community projects that the increase in taxes would be going to, then you would have an approved budget and an expenditure plan, and so then, you could have a committee that would be overseeing the expenditure of those specific dollars for the specific projects. So, I think with the idea that we have a general tax, we, we can identify within the ballot language the intended use or the public's desire for use of those taxes. Would you recommend, maybe we discuss, if the council has any specifics, so that we might be able to bring back a discussion of some ballot language that might include that?
I think that we have enough time with the next meeting to bring you back some language, and then have you comment on that. We'd still have at least one meeting and the possibility of actually calling a special if need be in order to meet our deadlines.
To talk about? Okay. Because I think if, even with a general, one of the comments that I've heard is that the taxpayers want to know what the money is going to be used for. For example, public works, projects, community projects, police, fire, you know, initiatives that they could really get behind versus just the general fund.
Isn't that, that should be kind of almost a boilerplate type thing? I'm sure there've been many, many ballots of this exact nature before, right?
And I think that's what all, DAC is going to really help me with.
Yeah, I mean, there are, the rationales that you use are more community-based, but, you know, reflections of the reasons that this community would do it. But there's some common denominators like public safety that come into play quite often.
So, may I have a question, just since it's going to be a general rather than a specific one, then we wouldn't need that community committee, is what you're basically saying? Okay.
Okay. And so, just so I understand, to clarify the GAN limit, you want to stay with, with both taxes within the anticipated $400,000 GAN limit as identified in the 16, 17 budget? Or do we want a discussion with the potential to maximize the GAN limit with the two initiatives?
I would like to see what that would, if we were to maximize the GAN limit, what that would look like, because I really don't want that to be the holdup. I want to get something and get going, but if there's a positive in that, I don't want to brush it aside either.
Right. We visited the GAN limit about three years ago, and we actually reduced it. And I want to either at least confirm that what we did at that time, the formula that we used was valid or was the best formula we could use, no reasons to question whether we did the right thing back then.
Yep.
Okay. We will prepare an item for the 17th.
So, you don't need a motion, you're good, just direction?
Yeah, this is just a direction item. Motion would not be required.
Is the council at all comfortable appointing a subcommittee to oversee this process with staff? Or would you like to wait till the next meeting?
I think we should wait.
Yeah, let's wait.
Okay. If we are done with that, then I'll move on to item number seven, consolidated staff report. So, in our agenda, there is a consolidated staff report. Is there any question from, or comment from council? No public comment. Okay. And then, moving on, council reports. I will start to my left with Vice Mayor.
Let's see, attended the homeless task force, just as a citizen, not a city council representative. But, you know, we were, just to kind of update the public as well as you all, so far, it's just really finding out and discovering what resources there are. That's kind of what we have done so far. And then, there's also a little, there's a pack that's been developed that has items in it to help the homeless. And I was looking to see the name of that. Oh, anyway, it's a homeless pack, basically. And you have things in it that they can use so that if we haven't been able to provide a shelter or someplace, you know, for them to live, at least we can provide things like a toothbrush and, and other items, a food packs, a different kind of food items and things like that, just to kind of, you know, to be, in the meantime, while we're still looking. And then, attended ACTBA today with a coffee talk. And actually, Melissa shared a lot of the things that we are talking about tonight to kind of help get the public to kind of get a feedback, and that was good this morning, to get a feedback from them of their thoughts. That was really helpful. And then, in the future, there was a couple of events we're looking at with Taste of Calaveras April 7th, and the Crafty Chicks Roadshow on April 21st at the Fairgrounds. And also, a restaurant tour, management training classes free, April 23rd in Angels Camp.
Did I hear correctly, but the Crafty Chicks Roadshow brings 4,000 people to the city?
I couldn't believe.
That's a lot. I was shocked. I had no idea.
They do homemade, vintage, repurposed, and upcycled, upcycled goods. Yeah.
Interesting. So, anyway, keep that in mind. You might want to go to that.
Councilmember, over.
A couple of things. Attended the museum commission meeting on the 15th. A couple of items that I think are noteworthy is, there's an audio file in the archives there. There's an audio file in the archives at the library that's got tape recordings of legacy families here in the motherland. Some of them date, you know, date back, people that have recollections that go back over 100 years. And so, one of the projects there was to get those tapes, which are highly susceptible to damage, digitized. And so, they were able to complete that project for about 500 bucks. Everything's digitized, 40-something separate conversations and interviews that make reference to things that go back to the 1880s. It's really pretty neat. So, now it's digitized, it's currently on a hard drive, but can be on a, on the cloud somewhere for future reference and, and planning. So, it's a pretty good, pretty good completion milestone for the group there. And they're also flushing out some details on some improvements there, rock and mineral exhibits, carriage house updates and things like that for signage and telling the story of the different things that are in there. On the 22nd, I attended a Cal Waste Tour at their plant down in Galt. Learned everything I ever want to know about trash. Amazing process, and, you know, really intense with respect to capital investments and sorting equipment and all of that, and some potential there for the city with respect to the contract that we have with them with franchise-free fees, excuse me, and benefit sharing and the recycling revenues. So, we need to take a hard look at that. On the 24th, I attended the Friends of the Library fundraiser in San Andreas. They had somewhere north of 200 people there, and they seemed pretty happy with the outcome and the money they raised. And then, on the 27th, I attended the UWPA meeting along with Scott. The remat decision for the Murphy Powerhouse is still in limbo with respect to the rate structure that's preferred for the district. All the staff reports were favorable. Flume repair requirements and associated costs are all under study, and irrigation contracts received by committee and placed in the hands of the GM for follow-up. That's, that's it for me.
Okay. Well, my thunder was stolen. Joe did a great job describing UWPA, so I don't need to talk about that. And Linda described the Coffee Tuesday, so I don't need to go into that too much. We did meet, Joe and I actually met with the fire department, talked about different options and things going forward, so make the future look brighter. And also, I've become involved with Habitat for Humanity, and we have $50,000 that is available for local repairs on houses. So, if you know anybody who lives here in town, whose house might be in disrepair, can't really afford to fix it, looking for help, we've got $50,000 you have to spend by the end of September. So, spread the word. And that's it for me.
And no comment. Calendar.
Okay, tomorrow night, 5:30, in the Board of Supervisors Chamber is a COG meeting, and after that, the Calaveras Transit meets. The 8th of April at 1:30, there's a lecture at the museum from slavery to the Smithsonian. 6:00 PM on April 12th, Planning Commission meets here at the Firehouse. At 10:00 AM on April 14th, Living History Day at the Angels Camp Museum. April 16th at 3:45 PM, Solid Waste Task Force, maybe? Is that up in the air?
Maybe. That's a good word.
Okay. And we're back here for council at 6:00 PM on the 17th of April.
The motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Okay, aye.
Quick.
Very fast on that motion.